Good evening, good evening. Please, uh, take your seats. We're getting ready to get started. Thank you. Hi Gloria. You're supposed to sit. Take your time, don't hurt yourself. Good evening. My name is Quentin Morgan. I'm here in, uh, a very good capacity to introduce the mayor tonight. I'm one of the city's attorneys, and I bring greetings from my office here tonight. Um, the mayor has been, uh, ha- having these town hall meetings to get input from the residents. He has been a longtime resident and served the city many years and with great honor. Um, so I have the pleasure to warm up this crowd today. Can I tell a couple jokes? I don't have any of those. I do have a knock-knock joke though. Knock-knock. Repeat. Who, 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 who? Alright. Without, that was terrible, I know. Thank you, thank you. I'll keep my day job. So without further ado, I want to bring up the mayor. Uh, it's my pleasure, uh, to bring up the mayor, Castillo.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Can all, can all of you hear me? It's working? Good. I had the honor about thirty-seven days ago, I think it is, of becoming the 12th mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines. And one of the things that I promised that I would do, uh, if I was ever given this opportunity, was to create for this city a strategic plan that came from you, that would drive everything that we do, that would be integral to every decision that we make here, that would inform every employee, from the city manager, to the person who picks up the papers, to the person who cleans the facility, to the person who mows the lawn, to the police, to the firefighters, to everyone in budget, to everyone in personnel, to every department, should find their mission in that plan. Because anything short of that would fail. It has to be integral. And it has to be measurable, and it has to be something that is comprehensive, meaning it touches each and every stop, each and everything that the city does here in the city of Pembroke Pines. And that it should be inspired by what we here in Pembroke Pines want to see the government doing. Because I have for my entire life, most of it served in government as an executive either in, either in a city, or in a county, or state. I served in the federal government. I moved around a little bit. And I've always believed this, the government works for the people, not the other way around. But the people have a job. They have to speak up, which at Pembroke Pines is not difficult. There are no shy retiring wallflowers in Pembroke Pines. It's one of the most endearing things about this city. No one is afraid to speak up. I love that. They have to go out and vote, because that's your job. They have to, uh, listen, and they have to react, and we have to form a family. We have to form a family, all of us together. Not the city against us, not us and them, all of us together, working toward common goals. Now, during my campaign, by the way, the campaign is over. It's now, it's now time to get to work. But during my campaign, I wanted to know what was on the minds of voters. And I didn't want to guess about it. So I asked them. And I donated to the city of Pembroke Pines the survey that I did of voters. And I'm gonna go through that with you, and I'm gonna talk, talk to you about the top ten issues that the voters of the city of Pembroke Pines had to say. And then, what I want to do is I want to open it up to your suggestions. Everything that you say is going to be taken down by the clerk. So if you'll all stand and raise your right hand. No, I'm only kidding. That's almost as bad as the, uh, uh, knock-knock joke, by the way. But everything, everything that you have to say will be taken down without names. It's not the names that matter. What matters is the substance of what you have to say. And we care very, very deeply about that. Couple of things about the survey before, before we get started. In a city of about a hundred and seventy thousand or so, which is what Pembroke Pines is, um, usually you try to get, you try hard to get about five hundred people to respond. Because that's what gives you a statistically sound footing for what every, and, and you make sure that you disperse that around the city. You make sure that your sample is pretty representative of the demographics. You don't want to just do it in one area or another. You don't want to just focus on women versus men, although maybe that's a good idea. You don't want to, you don't want to just focus on young people versus older people. You want a cross-section of the city that sort of matches, um, what the, the natural demographic of the city is. And we hoped to get five hundred responses. We got twenty-one hundred responses. This is a very reliable document. Okay? So, uh, I was happy to donate it to the city, and I'm happy to present it to you because I think it'll do us a lot of good. The number one issue that Pines residents who vote tell us is on their minds is traffic. Far and away, the number one issue. People want to get to where they're going faster. They want less volume on the roads. They're, the, the rush hour, uh, thing is, is an ordeal. Each and every day, they get up and they take their kids to school if they have school-aged kids. And met, too many of them are taking them to school in the most traffic inefficient way possible. You can't think of a more traffic inefficient way than this. One per car. One per car is the most traffic inefficient way to get kids to school. If you care about traffic, you have to deal with that issue. We have to reduce volume. And the way to reduce volume, in a state that has a law that says you can't get on a public school bus unless you live further than two miles from your school, not as you walk there, but as the crow flies. Because your school might be, uh, a mile and a half from where you live as the crow flies, but it takes about five miles to get around eight lakes and two, uh, and, 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 uh, a beautiful entrance and everything else in order to get to your house. One of the things that we must do is talk about reducing volume, because if we don't reduce volume, especially during, uh, rush hour, we're going to be swamped in traffic forever. It, it's a bullet that must be bitten. And not everyone is gonna want to do this. Not everyone is gonna want to entrust to a minibus driver, no matter how responsibly we put the program together. I love that song. No matter how responsibly we put together the, the program, they're not gonna want to do it. And I'm not gonna force anyone to do that. But guess what? A third, a third'll do it. And then next year, maybe a little more. And before you know it, it's forty percent. Let me suggest to you that if we can reduce traffic during rush hour by forty percent, the landscape on traffic is gonna be a very, very different thing. So that's the first part of traffic. The second part of traffic is, we have a number of traffic improvement plans on the books. They're waiting to start. One gentleman asked me about, uh, taking Pembroke Road out to US twenty-seven in the western part of our city. I have been stomping my feet and yelling about this, Charlie, for how long? Years, and years, and years. Okay? Finally, we're being told that somewhere around October of twenty-twenty-five, it'll get done. If we can get it done faster, we need to try to get it done faster. The paving of our roads is a major issue. The widening of some roads is a major issue. Moving, moving people toward, uh, park-and-ride options is a major issue. It, it'll be better for you. It'll be better for traffic. It'll be better for the city. We just did a strategic plan for, uh, uh, for, for traffic. It's about this thick. I think it would, if we did everything in it, it would cost two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, which is impossible for a, for a city of our scale. So we're gonna have to sit down as the city commissioner, and we're gonna have to prioritize what, what is possible within, within, within some reasonable means. But if we work together, there's much that we can do about traffic. The number two issue was high taxes. I have to tell you that we would not be Floridians if we didn't complain about taxes. We just wouldn't be. Floridians love government services, but they don't like to pay for them. And when we ask people this question, oh, by the way, I had another vignette. Do you know that several years ago, I was told by a traffic engineer that they did a survey? Now, I don't know how statistically accurate it was, but follow this. Folks were asked, if we provided you with additional mass transit services, would you support it? Ninety percent of Broward County said that they would support additional mass transit services. Then they said, if we provided these additional mass transit services, would you use them? Ninety percent of Broward County residents said they wouldn't. They would not. So, so Broward County, I see our state representative Marie Woodson, who does such a great job. Thank you, Marie, for joining us. Uh, Broward County is about doing mass transit so that their neighbor can use it. But they want to stay in their car. And so, so long as, I see Sue laughing. So long as that's the answer, we're not gonna get to where we need to be. I also see Robin Bartman is here, our state representative. She's gonna have a town hall meeting as soon as this one's over. So you have a, you have a double bill, you have a double bill tonight? There will be no cartoon in between. Uh, state representative Michael Gottlieb is here. Are there any other elected officials in the room? Did I miss anybody? Okay. Back to taxes. So you want us to treat your money as if it was, well, your money. And you want us to make sure that we don't misuse any of it, and that we put it all to proper use, and that we don't tax you more than we need to. And we get that. Affordable housing. Now, I want you to know that I've done this survey many times before. This is the first time I've made it a public record in the city. But this is the first time that I've ever done this, that this issue and the next issue that I'm gonna talk to you about were ever in the top ten. It should surprise no one, though I'm sure it's surprising some, that, eh, I don't know, every sixth or seventh house on your block, there's a twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty-two-year-old living there still with their parents, not because they're shiftless, not because they're not working, but because they cannot afford to leave. This is a problem. And we have to address that. Every city has to address that problem. You also have the issue of, uh, I mean, a one-bedroom in Pembroke Pines goes for what? Twenty-five hundred dollars, something like that, more or less, to rent it if you can find a, a one-bedroom? I never paid that in a mortgage, by the way. It's impossible, under today's salary scale in this community, to afford something like that. And that's why Harvard University recently put out a study, please Google it and find it, it's, it's easy to find, um, saying that Broward County is America's single most expensive place to live. If you want to rent. Against salary, against the salary structure, the single most expensive place to live. We have to do something about that. And we have to, we have to ascribe seriousness to that problem. Among other things, we're not making as many kids as, as we used to. And that's a big problem. It's a problem in the retail sector, but now, just last night, I went to, I went to a town hall meeting by the, uh, Broward Schools. They're thinking about closing schools. So this is, this is, this is, this goes far beyond anything that, uh, that we've ever faced before. And my view, if I had it my way in Pembroke Pines, is that we would build housing for our own people right here in Pembroke Pines. We're not looking to house anybody else but our own. Our own young people, our own families who lose a spouse for whatever reason, and want to keep their kids in the schools that, that they're used to. Um, a senior citizen living on a fixed income, who wants to stay in the community where they're from. And we in Pembroke Pines actually know how to do this, because we've run affordable housing programs. We have eight hundred units that are city-owned and operated. Most people don't even know they're there. That's how good neighbors they are. So affordable housing is a major issue, and we have to tackle that. Trash and recycling was never in the top five before. P, uh, the, one lady told me, "I feel cheated, Angelo." And I said, "Why?" And he says, "Well, you know, I raised my family so that I could teach them that no, Johnny, that doesn't go in the green bin. It goes in the blue bin." "Why, mommy?" "Well, because when you put it in the blue bin, you help the environment." I can't even do that anymore, because it all goes into the green ba, uh, green bin. And people have asked me, "Why did you, why did you do away with the blue bins?" By the way, mine's on the side of the house, because I'm an eternal optimist. And, um, uh, we explain to them. When everything, the easiest thing to do in recycling is separating it out. And even there, we had some trouble. But that's the easy part. The tough part is where it goes after you've separated it. And right now, all of our trash is, most of the trash in Broward County is going to an incinerator. And we don't want incineration in Broward, in Pembroke Pines, correct? So, th- this is no place for that kind of thing. So we have to find answers. And I want you to know that our, that our administrative team is working on finding a way to bring us back to recycling in the proper way. Not just to separate the stuff, but to actually send it somewhere where it can be processed into new products. Okay. Um, so trash and recycling is the next one. Flooding. I am not here to preach to you about whether climate change is real or not. You get to believe that on your own. There's plenty of information out there. There's no excuse for anyone not to be properly educated on that subject and to have a, a point of view. However, I can tell you this. Rain is measured in inches. We are getting more rain. And, um, that's a fact. That's not an opinion. We're getting more rain. And with that, we're getting more and more flooding conditions. I will never forget Hurricane Etta and the flooding that was, uh, on one-hundred-and-eighty-sixth Avenue in, in the western part of our city. They had standing three feet of water on that road that enters that section of Chapel Trail. There's a lake on either side, and you couldn't tell where the lake ended and the road began. It was just a body of water, and they had that there for five days. That's unacceptable. We have to find a way out. And I want to thank our state representative, Robin Bartman, because she went to work with the Drainage District and, 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 and the legislature. And she got us two high-capacity pumps that in three minutes have the ability to empty a swimming pool. That's pretty impressive. Now, of course, once you empty it, you have to have somewhere to put it. But, but that's a great first step, and we're very, very thankful to her for that. We need more conveyance of water so that we can move it out of, of, of where it stands. And that's a major issue in the city. The next issue was public safety. One of the great things that we can boast about here in Pembroke Pines is the incredible, uh, pride that we take in our police force. Our police force, unlike other police forces in other places in the country, has a really, really good reputation. We don't see these ugly sort of incidents like we've seen elsewhere, uh, with police officers disrespecting, not, uh, uh, treating people properly. I'm not saying that they can't be isolated instances, and, and those are dealt with, I assure you. But by and large, we have a police department that cares. It is a diverse police department in terms of staffing. It is the, the police department that looks like all of us. And they care about all of us. This is a city where children aren't afraid to run toward police cars, unlike so many other communities where they run away from them. And that's a great sign. When young people trust the police, that, that tells you that they, they feel a kinship with them. And that's important. However, we don't have enough cops. This is a community now where we're, we're constantly hearing about cars being stolen out of driveways while people are home, uh, where things are just happening. Uh, and you gotta remember that we are, we are in a, because Broward County is not a small place anymore. We are the seventeenth-largest county in America. When you take Palm Beach County, Broward County, and Dade County, and you add up that population, that is the second-largest tri-county area on the eastern seaboard of the United States. This is a big place now. It's not the Broward County of years ago where there was nothing between university and, uh, US twenty-seven except for the sportatorium. Those days are gone. We are lots and lots of people now. And with that comes issues. And we have to stay on top of what that is. Police officers are, are expensive. They're worth every penny. And we need more of them. The next issue was other. And I'm gonna skip over that, if you, if you don't mind, because it was, it was a big sort of potpourri of, 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 of issues. None of them in particular registered highly on the list, but statistically, they put it up there, and so I have to men- mention other. Education was the next issue. This is a community that takes a lot of pride in our schools. When I moved to, uh, Pembroke Pines in nineteen ninety-six, our number one issue was overcrowding and underperforming schools. Marie, you remember? Overcrowded and underperforming. Today, we're performing well, and we're under-enrolled. Imagine that. In just, what, not quite thirty years. Uh, we have to pe- spend a lot of time on education, making sure that everyone gets a, 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 a proper education, because you really only get one chance in life to be educated as a young person. But there's also adult education that's necessary. There's language, uh, that, that's available. There's continuing education that's available. People have a keen interest in education, and that is something that they told us about. Public corruption. Now, I happen to think that this issue is very, very important. And I want you to know that everyone who sits here has a very high ethical standard. We've never really had any scandal of any major kind in Pembroke Pines. That's not gonna happen during my watch. However, I just want you to know that we're very, very respectful that that, something like that comes up. Because for that to be on the top ten, and maybe a lot of it is influenced by other sort of things that we read in the paper elsewhere, um, that's a good check on us as, as public officials. And the, the last issue is parks. People love their parks. Our parks get a tremendous amount of, uh, of, of, uh, of, of work. Um, a tremendous amount of, of activity. Come summertime after, after rainy season, a lot of them get muddy, because this, these kids are, God bless them, they're having fun. But, and, and so we're gonna have to deal with, with those things as well. But adults also want to recreate in parks, and they want to see more activities in parks. They want to see more events. They want to see, they want to see the city help them to, uh, celebrate diversity in our city. A lot more. So parks, events in parks, all of that kind of thing, uh, uh, cultural arts and, um, and recreation is a major concern for folks. And those were our top ten issues. And I think everyone got a copy. Did it, did you all get a copy of, of it so that you can, so you could study it on, when, when you wish? Good. Now, we're gonna open it up, however, I have to make a couple of, uh, suggestions to you. This meeting is about the city of Pembroke Pines, the place where we, every night, put our heads down on our pillows, the place we call home. The place where they send us bills. Okay? I don't want to hear about Trump and Biden. I couldn't care less. That's not about this meeting. I don't want to hear about Tallahassee and what's going, that's not this meeting. Might be the next meeting, but not this meeting. Uh, uh, I don't want to hear about, um, uh, uh, I know that there are some people here from homeowner associations, and so we're gonna hear about this. But the city doesn't manage homeowner associations. So we want to listen to you, but I can't devote the whole meeting to that. This is about creating a strategic, comprehensive strategic plan for our city, our residents, and our government to work with you. That's measurable, that you can see, that you can touch, you can feel, you can see it on your computer screens. You can check where we are. No one should have to ask me, "Where's, where, what's going on with Pembroke Road extension?" All you have to do is go like this, Pembroke Road extension in the search box, and it comes up. And it tells you in real time what's going on in the city. That's what we want. We want you to know what's going on, and we want you to constantly tell us what else has to go on. So with that said, I'd like to open this up. Now, I want to tell you, I think I mentioned before, city clerk is here. She's gonna write down everything that you say. She's very capable. And she's gonna write down everything that you say, and everything that you say is gonna be reviewed by staff and then vetted by the city commission, and we will put out this plan. And then we will meet again to talk about the plan that's possible for us. So Jonathan Bonilla, who's a great guy, is here. He's an assistant city manager. He's gonna help you by, by, by putting the, uh, the, uh, the mics around. Our city manager, Charles Dodge, is here. Please say hello to city manager Dodge. Many of you don't get to see him. He's been with us for a long time, and we named the building next door after him. And, uh, uh, who else is here? Danny Almagar, the, uh, the chief from, uh, a fire department. We have the best fire department in the world, and I'm so very, very proud of them, and thank you, chief, for being here. Michael Stam is here. He's an assistant city manager in, uh, in the planning and economic development area. Thank you very much. Christina Sorensen, an assistant city manager, who's in charge of our parks and recreation and cultural arts. Did I get that right? Pretty much? And, uh, and all of you are here. And that's, uh, oh, oh, ah! Lisa Chang, our, our finance director. She's also an assistant city manager, correct? If not, you should be. And, um, oh, Marty Gajewski, our deputy city manager, is here. And also Dan Rothstein, who is our, uh, HR and risk management, uh, assistant city manager, is here. Ev- everyone is here to listen to what you have to say, because they're gonna have to do the work. So, uh, let's start with suggestions now. Please. The floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Ram Tivari. I have been a resident of Pembroke Pines since nineteen eighty-eight. And I am privileged to live in the city of Pembroke Pines. I want to thank Mayor because he did this listening tour. That's a wonderful idea. So I really appreciate and thank you for that. I wish each commissioner will do their own district to find out the local conditions or local problems in their own district. You have already highlighted the item, one thing which I am concerned with, and probably this is a suggestion, environmental sustainability and resiliency. Because that is connected with the flood, with the solid waste and recycling. So nowadays, you hear environmental sustainability and resiliency, because say flood protection, if there's more rain and other things. So I think that should also be included. I do not know where it will go into others. But that is, and as a environmental engineer, that is my concern. And hopefully, the solid waste management will be a top priority, because everybody is producing garbage, but nobody wants the garbage, and that has to be taken care of. So that will be a good thing to do. I also want to say, I think planning and zoning department is doing good, because they coordinate with us on the advisory board. But I think there should be one more person hired. I'm talking about the staff. Who can, could be the coordinator about the environmental issues. I'm talking about the staff who could be the coordinator about the environmental issues. Like, you nowadays, you hear forever chemicals. Did you hear about that, that in our water, we have six forever chemicals? So those kind of things are biosolids which are hauled away to central Florida. So there are certain items which should be part of, in my opinion, should be part of that environmental sustainability, and there should be a person who could be in charge, who could coordinate water treatment, wastewater treatment, biosolids, solid waste. So there should be a person, and I will be happy to give more, but at this time, thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're taking that down. Who's next?
Ah.
My friend in the back.
There, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah? Wonderful. There are two items that I would like to address, and you may have already addressed it, but one is the overwhelming traffic we have in this town. It's amazing how you can go from your house to, let's say, poof, let's say...
A mile away.
Yeah, a mile away, and it takes you forty-five minutes. This is ridiculous. People have to get to work. So there's something that we need to do. The other problem I find is, in some areas, there are insufficient lights where it can be very dangerous.
You mean traffic signals or illumination lights?
No, I'm talking about traffic lights.
Okay.
I'm talking about, and nobody would be... There is... There is an intersection between Palm and Seventh Street. You could spend your time until lunchtime trying to get through there. Those are some of the things, but I think...
Those are very helpful suggestions.
I'm sorry?
Those are very helpful suggestions.
Well, there are other areas, I feel, that are not helpful to us. We have a very large community. I don't know what, seventeen or more thousand people, maybe more, and...
You're talking about Century Village?
No.
You're talking about which area?
No, I'm not talking about Century Village. That's a whole different entity. I didn't want to go there.
You said seventeen thousand, so I was just trying to...
Oh, all right, right. I heard that. But the total population of Pembroke Pines is what, closer to seventy?
A hundred and seventy.
Wow, I'm impressed.
Yeah. Well, I'll impress you a little bit more. On any given Saturday or Sunday, two-thirds of the traffic you're talking about, according to some, are people that don't even live in Pembroke Pines. They're coming to visit us. They're coming to recreate. They're coming to shop here. This is one of the major... Pines Boulevard is one of the major commercial destinations in all of South Florida. People come here all the time. So it's not just the people from here, it's also what our goodness attracts.
There's one other item I have to, and then I'll let you all go home or wherever you're going.
They're not going anywhere yet.
The problem is, we keep bragging about our trees, our canopy. I have to be honest with you, there is no canopy. Wilma ripped it out, and we have not replaced it. So we have very little trees, few trees, and we should redo that. We need to work on our canopy. Trees give origin and oxygen and love to people. They give us health. They give us oxygen. So I would suggest we work on the canopy.
Thank you so very much for all those...
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Who's next? Yes, sir. Excellent ideas. Thank you. Thank you. Most people don't realize, to go east to west in Pembroke Pines, you have a choice of three roads. Pines, Pembroke, and Sheridan. We talked about Pembroke being widened. What about Sheridan? Sheridan, there are plans for the widening of Sheridan Street. That's an MPO project, I believe. Well, Broward County project. It has to be accelerated, and that's part of the traffic plan that you will all see, but there are plans to widen it.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Sunny Morrison, and I've been living in Pembroke Pines since 2003. I have noticed that there has been a lot of development with different housing and different apartments, and I think that contributes to the traffic, you know, like the young lady said. Is there a cap or is there some type of limit of how many homes can be built?
So there's two answers to that question. The first is zoning sort of determines what's possible on privately-owned land. And the other is an observation that I've always had, which I want to share with you under the most respectful terms. Everyone thinks that, and I've fallen into this myself, everyone thinks that one more house is too many, except for their own. And this is a problem. I hear this from folks all the time. You took down all the trees to put in these townhouses. But I happen to have voted against the townhouses, but okay. We took down all these trees to put up the townhouses, but they forget that many trees were taken down to build their house. And so one of the things that we have to sort of do is put it in context. Pembroke Pines is almost built out. What we have to do now is shift gears. And I tell this story all the time, and perhaps you'll remember. See that city seal? See the beautiful sun in that city seal? That's supposed to be a sunset. The mission of Pembroke Pines has been westward growth, westward growth, westward growth, westward growth, endless westward growth. We're there now. There isn't going to be a hell of a lot more growth. What we need to do now is we need to think about managing a maturing city with new urban challenges. Growth management is no longer going to be the number-one issue on the agenda because the land is mostly occupied. Yeah, there'll be this, there'll be that, there'll be some redevelopment projects. But one of the things that we also have to do is take that sunset and turn it into a sunrise, and we have to start paying attention to the eastern part of the city. We have to start looking this way because they need help too. Can't just be one part of town. This plan won't work unless we're one city together. So we have a lot of work to do. We have the most talented people. I have to tell you, I would take them anywhere. The team that Charlie has assembled here for all of you is simply fantastic. I would take them anywhere, to any government, and we would get things done. All they need is a good sense of policy that comes from this board because it really does. And if you guys can get behind this effort, you're going to see a much better city pretty quickly because one of my gifts is impatience. So I don't like to... I like to see things moving along. So I want to thank you for that comment, but a lot of it is going to be self-resolving. Yes? Oh, this fellow is next.
Hi there, Mr. Mayor. I'm Max.
Hi, Max.
So I have a suggestion that I think should address the top-three issues that residents of Pembroke Pines have, starting with the taxes context. There's a great company called Urban Three that you might or might not have heard about...
We can talk to Michael just a little bit.
Oh, sorry. So there's this company called Urban Three that's planning and consulting firm that actually looks at individual properties on a tax basis, on property tax basis. So how much taxes are going in versus how much is the city spending on serving them with roads, sidewalks, sewer, water, all that stuff? And what they found is that in the most cases, single-family homes just do not pay their fair share of taxes in order to keep up with the cost of services. And in Florida, with Save Our Homes, that's just extra true because we're capping how much property taxes can go up at lower than inflation or three percent. So city services are just going to get more and more expensive while single-family homes just don't pay enough. So here, the property taxes are really paid by apartments and by commercial properties.
It's a hell of a thing for a nonprofit to say, but go ahead.
So in this case, we have a solution because we need the apartments not just for affordable housing, but also for tax purposes. If people don't want to pay higher taxes, we need to allow this development to pay the taxes for them. Broward County has the Primo Plan coming in place.
What?
The Primo Plan coming in place. And Pines Boulevard is getting a high-frequency bus service that goes straight east-west on Hollywood. It's a bus at least every ten minutes, probably even better. So we have an opportunity here to allow for transit-oriented development, which is mixed-use apartments within walking distance of that transit corridor. And if the city of Pembroke Pines can amend the zoning code and say, "Hey, those apartments on Pines that are within walking distance of Pines, we're going to say that they don't have parking spaces." We're not forcing anybody to go carless, but it's your choice that you can get an apartment, not have a car, and it's your affordable house, and you're going to rely on that bus that BCT is putting in.
It's worth evaluating.
Yeah, and then you don't have the traffic issues that new development brings.
It's worth evaluating. I can't resist but to say one thing to you about the... And I want to thank you for your comment. One thing to you about my friends at Broward County, and I say that with great respect for the work that they do. You'd think that a community that wants so many people on buses would take the time to make sure that every bus stop was covered, that there was a fan there and a light, so that when you actually look forward to getting onto the bus rather than being sun-struck, caught in a storm, or mosquito-bitten to death. And yet, I constantly tell these, my friends in the transit and transportation area, "You have to think backwards from what would get you on a bus." And then the light goes off. Would you stand at a bus stop with the sun over your head like this, with bugs flying in your ears, and it's going to rain because it doesn't have a top, maybe just a little solar-powered fan, to make it a little bit more livable? We have a long way to go. So when they talk about more mass transit, I'm all in. I'm all in. I like the idea. But let's make it more enjoyable for people and just watch more people use that option, you know? And I don't think it takes a hell of a lot to put a little aluminum thing that protects people from the environment when they're waiting for a bus. End of sermon. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. I'm listening to this conversation about how you're going to build things up. And I used to live in Miami-Dade County for many, many years when I first moved there, and I worked in Coconut Grove. It was very walkable. It was really nice. It was livable. And then they got the idea to fill in all those spaces in downtown Miami, Coconut Grove, up, and put trains running around there, and it looks like you're in a concrete jungle. It's not a nice place. As far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't want to be anywhere near there. So I think that has...
No one goes there anymore. It's too crowded.
Well, but that's something... That is something that has to be thought about when you're trying to figure out how to put more people in that same space. The only way is up. And then you have a density issue and traffic issue and buses. It changes the charm of the city completely.
It does. It is the history of America.
Yeah, I know.
We go out, then we go up, then we go out. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to give you thanks for the opportunity to be here and talk to you and creating this opportunity to share our thoughts. As you know, some of us here are going to bring up something that I know that you guys have no control over, but a lot of your citizens have been suffering for abuses in terms of property management, and a lot of your citizens are suffering from that. We got no elections. We have single members in our board. There have been several cries to the DVPR, and no one seems to do something about it. And basically, I appreciate you, this opportunity, so we can get in touch with our representatives and help, but there is a lot of your citizens suffering from this because there is a lot of abuse in property management mishandling condos.
I just want to tell you that it's not that we don't care. We care about every citizen and every concern that every citizen has. But under the law, we have great limits when it comes to condo associations and homeowner associations. Cities in Florida are not set up to have any jurisdiction, really, over those matters. Condo and homeowner associations are licensed by the state. They're regulated by the state. And lucky for all of you, we have three outstanding state representatives here who are going to have a town hall meeting as soon as this one's finished, and I hope that you'll stay and talk to them a little bit more about this. This business of you reaching out to the Department of Business Services and then not getting back to you is not something they're going to stand for. So give them an opportunity to work with you. They want to do it. This is something that they have new laws about, tougher laws about. Some of them even carry criminal penalties. I want you to know, they are working very, very hard on your behalf to try to assist you. We will do everything that we can when it comes to code enforcement, when it comes to permitting, when it comes to police, fire, parks, traffic, affordable housing, trash and recycling, all these things. We will do all of those things for you, but there are some things that only the state can do. And we want you to win, and we want you to be happy, and we want you to get what you deserve from the associations, every association in our community. However, we don't do that. In my former district, we have a condo that has had a couple of issues with their gate. I think maybe you saw about it, maybe you saw it on TV. And there are long lines to get in their gate, and that's unfortunate. That's not your city doing that. That's the condo doing their own security at their own private facility. So there is a segregation of duties, and I want anyone to think that it's because the city doesn't care. The city does care, but we also respect the limits of our jurisdiction. And so you have state officials here who are willing to work with you on that, and I urge you to work with them so that they can help you, okay? Other issues? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Zembla Shaw. Couple of comments. One, and I guess this is going to go to the state rep. Pembroke Road, University, the driver's license office. I live on that road, which the plans are to widen it. That's going to create an impact on... But there's a big issue with traffic over there. There's a big issue with people setting up over there and just starting at twelve o'clock at night to six o'clock in the morning until it opens. My suggestion is to put somebody over there, a security company or something, and open up the gates so that people can get off the roadway because when I'm making a right turn and people are blocking the south side, I can get hit because they can't see around the other cars when I'm going east to make a right turn to go south. That's suggested. And I'll... And I'll say to you what I said, I, I'll say to them what I said to you on the email. I've been a resident of the city since 1996, and I think Charles Dodge was the city manager then. But, uh, and I told you, I have to go to Miramar to have something that resembles me in, in the city, I pay my taxes. I told you that, I emailed you that. I hope with a new leadership, we're able to be more inclusive, unlike past administration and things that I can say because I'm a voter. Uh, but I hope that we are more inclusive, to have things that resonate for all of the city. Events that resonates for all of the cities. It's 18%, but still, we have a voting power. Thank you.
Let me tell, let me tell you how I met him. So, I was walking door-to-door campaigning, and he was out, uh, mowing his lawn. He was looking at me like, "Who's this guy?" So, I said, "You're probably thinking, 'Who's this guy?'" So, "Hi, my name is Angelo," and we said hello, and, and I asked him how long he lived here, and he told me, and I said, "So, what's going on, what do you think of Pembroke Pines?" He says, "Let me tell you what I think of Pembroke Pines. How come I gotta go to Miramar in order to celebrate my diversity?" And I said, "Shit." That hit hard. And, uh, we're gonna have to figure that out. That's, that's gotta be part of this plan, because there's too many people saying that to me. So, I want to thank you for saying that, because it makes us a better city. Yes, sir?
Traffic is well above number one on your chart. I listened to what's in the planning. I listened to what was in the planning. How much input does the city of Pembroke Pines have on the improvement and suggestions for improvement to make our traffic better?
So, it, 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 it depends largely on what your style is in management. The people who speak up, who speak up often, who speak up relentlessly, who don't give up, tend to win. And those who mention it and go away tend to lose. That's been my experience in government. If you say it, and if you say it again, and if you say it once more, and if you say it too many times, and if you say it obnoxiously, and if you're relentless in what you ask for, you tend to win. And, uh, if we want to win, we have to be doing things differently. Yes?
Okay.
And that's how you enter into partnerships. So, somebody wants something from you, and you say, "Okay, uh, here's what I need, how can you help me with that?" And, that's how America gets built. That's how traffic gets solved, that's how this happens, that's how that happens. And, that's the way it has to be. And, uh, if somebody presents you with a deal that you can't live with, you have to say no. And if somebody asks you to do them a favor that you can do, you say yes. You should be helpful to everyone that you can be. But, if somebody pu- imposes a duty on you that you can't live with, you have to say ouch. That, I can't do that. So, I think it's, I, I think it's about management style and philosophy. And we have a team of people here who are very, very talented, and what they're looking for is guidance from you so that your city commission can direct them in, 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 in terms of what, what they have to do. You can't be afraid to have a confrontation and solve problems. Can't, you can't do it that way. Because people, you know why? It's a shame. I didn't make the rules, I just live here. Uh, but, um, people constantly com- uh, confuse kindness for weakness. Isn't that true? And when in fact kindness is probably the biggest strength there is. But, if, if they confuse kindness for weakness, you lose. And you can't allow that to happen, yes?
Uh, yes. Good e- good evening, thank you so much for having us here. I think a lot's gonna be accomplished by this. Um, also, we met with, uh, Mike Stam a week or two ago, and he was so very, very helpful. We're having to remove all the trees in the islands and redo them because they're tearing everything up. And, anyway, he's working with us, and it was, it was very nice.
Thank you very much for that.
Um, the other thing is, what I hear from people who drive in this city is traffic enforcement, that people are, are driving 80 miles an hour in, in a, you know, 45-mile zone, right? And, and we live near, uh, Flamingo Road.
Yep.
And, they think that's a raceway.
Yep.
Especially in that area where there's no streets that break into it.
Yep.
They, they just race up and down there, you know, the noise is horrendous. And the same with Johnson Street. They think Johnson Street is the Indy 500.
Yep.
And, um, we never see, or we don't ever see anybody out there, and I realize the police are stretched thin. Um, maybe there could be, I don't know, I guess somebody besides a police officer can't-
Nope.
Can't enforce it, so it has to be a police officer. But, um, if there was any way to seek out a little bit more help on those kind of things, it would be, a lot of people appreci- would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You, sir?
Hi, uh, my name is Matthew, and I'm part of the number-one problem Pines. I am traffic, I drove here. And if you want me off the road, then this is what you need to do. One, the air-conditioned bus, bus stops, we have everything else air-conditioned. It's time to bring that, like, 1950s technology to the bus stop. That's one way to get me off the road. Two, if I'm going on a bus stop, I don't want to get on a bus stop to drive somewhere else or drive somewhere to get to the bus stop. When I'm getting off the bus stop or getting onto the bus stop, I just want to walk off there and be where I want to be. So, you gotta allow the, update the zoning so that the housing and the businesses are all in walking distance of the bus stop. And that means not having to walk through, like, a, like, an acre of parking spaces. That means, like, right when you get off the bus stop, you are where you want to be. So, if you want to solve traffic, I hate driving, I want to not be part of the traffic anymore, but you all gotta have work with me a bit.
Thank you very much for that comment. We're, we're writing it down. Yes, sir?
How you doing, Mayor? Uh, thanks for having us here. Um, about a year and a half ago, I walked my wife out to her car at 5:00 AM to a, uh, six-foot-six guy, um, looked like he could be 250, running away from our car. So, I never thought I needed a shotgun to protect our family living in Silver Lake, Pembroke Pines. Never, and we've been there since 2003. So, now, today, it's getting more and more dangerous. There's people every, almost every night I see on the Ring app, um, checking cars, checking doors, pulling on handles. And they're getting very, very comfortable with doing it because it's happening every night. So, in order to be comfortable, there's no threat of, of, of getting in trouble. There's no, um, you know, um, way of getting caught. So, you do it every night. So, growing up in Miami, I was born and raised in Miami, and there was an area called Biscayne Park. Biscayne Park had a sign said, "Don't even think about speeding," on that end and that end. And guess what? No one went through Biscayne Park because it wasn't if you got stopped, you were gonna get stopped. "Hey, you're doing 32 in a 30, what's going on?" You know, so, it was, no one, everyone avoided Biscayne Park. So, here in Pembroke Pines, if we can set up a task force or something that goes back to the officers, um, set up a task force and kind of stop cars going through Pines Boulevard, Pembroke Road, Sheridan Street, um, at 2:00 in the morning with nowhere to go, just rolling through. You know, it, 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 I think it would slow down the traffic, slow down the, 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 uh, theft that's in our community. Because, I'm telling you, they are extremely comfortable with just walking through, walking through, checking, checking handles.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. The character of, of Pembroke Pines is starting to change because we don't have enough police officers. And I'll be damned if I'm gonna allow that to happen. We have to fight it, we have to fight it hard, and we need more boots on the ground to do it. And, uh, what you're mentioning is, is, is absolutely correct. And, uh, it's either they're gonna win or we're gonna win. And, uh-
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir?
I'm a speaker, so I don't-
You go ahead, you go ahead.
So, um, also, you know, it's a, it's a, the donuts in the street now. Um, again, comfortable.
Uh-huh.
You know, I live on Knight Street and 184. Pembroke Pines Police Department is one block over.
Yep.
Like, that, that, that's the, how comfortable they are. You know, that, I mean, I don't know if anybody else is experiencing that, but it's starting to get really comfortable, and it's-
You, you, you know why they're comfortable? Because they can. Okay, so, we have to figure out a way to make them uncomfortable. And that's a good discomfort to have. State Representative Ballen. Now, I'm gonna tell you one more thing, and this won't surprise you. When I speak to the police officers who do catch those incidents, they're telling me seven, eight times out of 10, it's kids from that own, their own neighborhood. So, some of this is gonna have to, uh, happen at home. Um, our society works because most of the people, most of the time, voluntarily agree to obey the laws. And when that breaks down, you can't hire enough cops. So, what we have to be able to do is make sure that we do our part and that the city does their part. And it's that partnership that has to, uh, that has to exist. When most of the people, most of the time, do not voluntarily agree to obey the laws, you have anarchy. And that can't, that can't be allowed here in Pembroke Pines. Yes, ma'am?
And then that just kind of faded after that.
Okay, so, the Crime Watch program went away when, uh, the Trayvon Martin, uh, George Zimmerman, uh, incident happened in Sanford, Florida. And, uh, people have been tiptoeing around it. Just today, I sent city manager and the police chief a, uh, uh, an, an email because this is my fifth town hall meeting, and this suggestion has come up at every single one of them. So, I want to hear from them under what circumstances, what training would be necessary, uh, what their recommendation is for, for, uh, for bringing Qui- Crime Watch back. Uh, this is something that has been tiptoed around for a long time. And, uh, people, there, there are people in this community who are willing to volunteer their time, just as they historically did, uh, to perform that duty, and if, if we have such good citizens, uh, we should put them to work.
Well, we were more the eyes and ears, we didn't get involved.
Right.
I didn't, I was just, you know, we also-
But, but that's what happened with George Zimmerman. So, so what you have to do is you have to explain to people what their role is, what their limits are, and what they're to do when they see something. And, uh, uh, and then hope that they follow it, because what happened in Sanford was out of control. That can't, that can't be allowed to happen here.
And, are you going to hire more police officers?
If, if, if it was for me to do, yes. Huh? Well, I'm one, I'm one of five votes here, and I respect each and every one of my colleagues. But, that's only, that's a decision that only we five can make together. Yes? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Hello? Okay, you can't hear me. Um, okay, so, um, before I say what I'm gonna say, I have to respond from earlier, what you said about the taxes about, "Oh, that's a hell of a thing to hear from a nonprofit." I want to let you know that we're not incorporated as a nonprofit. We don't get any tax breaks, we don't get any grants. We're just people. Like, when you hear from Better Streets Broward, you're hearing from people who pay taxes, not a nonprofit that doesn't. Um, I, I want to caution you with, um, traffic being an issue, it obviously is. Um, so, people asked Henry Ford why he built the car, and why he didn't ask people what they wanted. And he said, "If I asked people what they wanted, they would have said a faster horse." If you ask people what they want to fix traffic, they're gonna tell you more lanes. We know that that doesn't work, induced demand. Um, so, I want to caution you against widening roads. There are a lot of other ways to do that. If you want to get into the details about it, I would love to meet with you, um, or any of your staff, because it's kind of a lot to put into a, a public comment. But, um, so, just the, that's kind of been what we've done in the past, but that results in a lot of safety issues.
I, I, I totally agree with you.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, I mentioned, I mentioned the issue about taxes because even people who, who live in tax-free environments want government services. And government services are not possible without taxes, because things have to be paid for. Uh, the second point is, you have wonderful ideas, and I love the ideas that, that are coming from you. Take the time to do these, these surveys. Call people and ask them, "If we did this, would you go for it? If you did that, would you go for it?" We should never make an assumption about what's on somebody else's mind without asking them. Because I have to tell you, widening roads is what they want. That's what they're asking for. Now, maybe it's not what they need. Maybe, maybe, maybe the conversation has to evolve, uh, to another place. I'm all for that.
Right.
I'm all for evolving conversations. But, at the end of the day, right now, we're stuck in traffic, and something's gotta be done.
Right. But, 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 but trying to fix traffic with wider roads is, in the words of Chuck Marone, interesting guy, look him up. Uh, like, trying to fix obesity with bigger pants.
Thank you.
So, what, so, so, so when Henry Ford didn't give people a faster horse, he gave them a car. Instead of giving them wider lanes, give them higher densities for walkable cities, give them safer bike paths.
Yeah.
Give them the fans, the transit, um, all of the things that are required, transit-oriented development, all of those things that are required to make transit work.
Yep.
Um, and then, here's another one, here's one that's not gonna be popular.
What?
Parking, parking lots, oh my God. So, uh, parking lots, something like a third of our land, um, probably in plantation where I'm originally from, is like, probably more like half of our land is used for parking. So, what happens when half the land is used for parking? What happens when parking minimums make it so that the size of the parking lot is like two, three, four, five, six times the size of the building? Everything is way too far apart to be able to walk. "Oh, but we need parking because we're car-dependent, we can't get rid of parking until we have the transit." Well, guess what? We can't get the transit and the walkability and the bikability until we get rid of parking either. And, let me tell you, when you get rid of your parking minimums, the parking spots do not vanish. There is time. And it's a transition, and it needs to be made tactfully, but it's gonna have to happen. And it's also, it's kind of needs to be the first step, and it is also, um, it's low-hanging fruit. It doesn't need, you don't need an extra budget item to take out parking minimums.
Thank you very much for that. We're writing it down, we're gonna study it.
Okay.
Thank you. He hasn't spoken yet, I, I'll come back to you. Yes?
Good evening. Um, my comment, I think, has been sort of touched upon, uh, as it relates to, uh, traffic and public safety. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that for the record, I made the comment. My wife and I are here, uh, we're parents of children who attend the charter school system, and they both, uh, ride school buses. They get picked up and dropped off every day. And, um, their route and where they get picked up and dropped off is very unsafe. And my wife, on multiple occasions, has watched our daughter almost get hit by a car. Um, it's been brought up before, the traffic is out of control, the speeding is out of control. There was a comment that was made, where you made a comment about making a distinction about what our officers can and cannot do as it relates to the stops. So, I'd like to hear more about that and what can we do if it's resourcing our officers or expanding our police department. I'm all for it. Um, we hear on the news every day about children getting, getting hit and getting run over and killed, and pedestrians. And so, the last thing that we need here in Pembroke Pines is to be a statistic and be on the news and hear that one of our children has been run, run over by a car. So, um, I, I'm, I'm open to the, you know, what is it that we need to do as citizens to support our police department, get more boots on the ground? Because i- it's really, really bad.
I appreciate, I appreciate the comment, we just took it down, and, uh, we will get back to you. I have time for one more comment before... I have time for two more comments before we begin to wrap up because our state representatives are here and they, and they have a meeting to conduct as well. Yes?
I drive all day, every day for my job. I'm a home health, home health therapist. My concern is my patients are afraid to use the hospital anymore, the ER, because they're so, um, overcrowded. Because our growth here in Pembroke Pines has expanded so rapidly that the hos- Because our growth here in Pembroke Pines has expanded so rapidly that the hospitals are not able to keep up with the overpopulation, in my opinion. So, I, that's my concern, is the hospitals.
Well, we're in the midst now of dealing with that by building, by allowing two new ER facilities to come here, and the hospital is suing us over it. I can think of a couple of reasons, but they're, but we're doing, we're doing what we can. We know that there are, there's a lack of ER services here, and we're working on that. I want you to know that that's something we're aware of and we're working on. I can take one more comment, and then we have to wrap up. Jack, I'm sorry, but we'll, yes, go ahead. All right.
It's not like our police department isn't trying to fill their empty spots. The issue is, they are maintaining the highest professionalism in the people they hire, constantly train, and review. Our police department can be put up against any department.
Yes.
Anywhere. And that's the positive. The negative is, in the hiring practice of all of the people that apply, and it's a very involved process, if we're lucky, 2% actually get sworn. It's not what we're, we're lacking spots, not because we're not trying, but the city is doing everything they can to maintain their level and the, getting the officers on the road doing what's been said here. Secondly, our community affairs department, which is probably as active as any in the state of Florida, has a program to indoctrinate civilians to a point where they have enough training that they can volunteer themselves, should they want, in all areas, so more police officers that are doing jobs that they don't necessarily have to be doing can be put on the road to make our city safer.
Yes, sir. You're right. One of the things that I didn't tell you about this was, at the end of the questions, we ask people, "Do you have anything else to add?" Because you always sort of do that, because you don't wanna limit folks to, you know, what they've said, "Do you have anything else to add?" The number-one thing people had to say, the number-one thing, "I love living in Pembroke Pines." The number-one thing they had to say was, "I love living in Pembroke Pines." There really is something very special about the city that we call home. It's a beautiful city. It's a bucolic city. We could have more trees. We could have fewer stores. We could have fewer parking spots. We could have fewer, fewer community crimes. But there really is something very special about the city. So, in two or three words, when I go around, I wanna hear you tell us why you love Pembroke Pines. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Because I feel safe here, and I like the people.
Thank you very much. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
It's close to everything, and I just like my community very closely.
Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Very convenient. That's it.
Very convenient. Why do you love Pembroke Pines, ma'am?
Because there's so many churches to attend.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Well, I don't live here, but there's a, there's a very nice golf range here called All Golf, and I come out here from Fort Lauderdale just to go to that range.
It's a kick-ass golf range. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
The community, my neighbors.
Thank you very much. Why do you love Pembroke Pines, Jack McCloskey?
I've got a speech to make.
Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Because it's centrally located, and it's safe.
Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Part of the best county in the best state.
There you go. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
I think it's just a wonderful community. It's safe, it's clean, it's just nice.
You like it. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Diversity.
Diversity. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Two things, the environment and my neighbors. They're fantastic.
Fantastic. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Friends and family.
Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Because it's a place on the way up, not on the way down.
Gabe, why do you like Pembroke Pines?
Charter school system.
Beautiful. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Because I can walk and run on almost every single sidewalk in the city.
Larissa, why do you love Pembroke Pines?
Because it's the best place to be, and it sunsets.
Ah, beautiful. Why do you love Pembroke Pines?
The community, diversity, and the unity, like we're doing here today.
I love Pembroke Pines because I get to share it with all of you. And I wanna thank you very much for all of your comments that have been written down, and the next step in this process will be to come up with a strategic plan that is comprehensive and worthy of your approval, and we will be holding these town hall meetings throughout the city. This is the fifth of the first 10 that I will do. I'll do as many of these as I need to in order to get all the information that we need, and I wanna thank each and every one of you for your input. Next on the Rosca is our state representatives. Thank you very much. Please give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you. Mayor Castillo, that was great, right? Give him another round of applause. So, we're hoping everybody stays for the state representative. Can y'all hear me? Okay. All right, we're hoping everybody stays for the state representative town hall. We're gonna stand up at the front. We're gonna talk fast, because we know it's getting late tonight. I'm gonna do a one-minute introduction of myself. My name is Mike Gottlieb. I'm state representative, District 102. I represent Davie Plantation, Sunrise, Cooper City, Pembroke Pines, Southwest Ranches. I think that was all my cities. I think I got them all correct. I'm primarily in the judicial silo in the state house. I'm now gonna pass the mic to Representative Marie Woodson to introduce herself.
Good evening, everyone. I know you're a little tired, and we're gonna make it quick tonight. We don't want to keep you long. My name is Marie Woodson, and I proudly represent District 105, which is parts of Hollywood, Pembroke Pines, Miramar, Highlanddale, West Park, and Pembroke Park. I have the east side of Pembroke Pines, but east or west is one Pembroke Pines, and we need to serve the entire community. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I am Representative Felicia Robinson. I represent House District 104. And, no, and I cover parts, I'm the bi-county rep, because I cover parts of Pembroke Pines, Miramar, and then I go into Dade County, so I have parts of Miami Gardens also.